I'd like to welcome you here this morning to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. We'll go ahead and start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remind everyone to silence their cell phones. The meeting documents are available for review down on the end next to Commissioner Hiebarger. And Craig and Carol are both here this morning if you need a listening device. That takes us to routine business and consider a motion to approve our agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion in a second. I guess we need to amend our agenda.
A motion to amend the agenda for executive session immediately to follow for, is that what you need? Is one and three?
Yes, and apparently we need to amend it to enter into executive session for the purposes of SDCL 1-25-2, one and three.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, my agenda shows that...
Apparently there are different versions out there, so now we're good. Now we know that that's what we're doing, so...
Yeah.
And we'll make sure that we try to get this straight in the future. Okay, so now that takes us to routine business, or to item two, entertain a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes from March 5th, 2019.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $3,483,083.95.
Pay the bills. Second.
Motion in a second, any comments?
Madam Chair, we have 2.7 million that, from motor vehicle licenses going to the state, and 200 grand for armor correctional health, so that's about $3 million of our 3.48 million in bills this week.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. There's a number of reports this week for year review. We have a mobile crisis team, annual statistics for 2019, the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office report for February 2019, the Minnehaha County Coroner's Report for December 2018, and their annual report for 2018, the Auditor's Office Annual Report for Minnehaha County ending December 31st, 2018, and the highway construction projects update for March 2019. Takes us to item five, personnel actions, and consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve routine action.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are abatements. Olivia.
The first abatement is for the city of Sioux Falls, parcel 14393, for 2018 property tax exemptment, $2,0240, sorry, $2,0240, I can't speak today, it's 2242.38, I apologize. And then the second one is assessment freeze, parcel 18570, 2018 property taxes, 642.41.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Now that entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I think you're both wise, just a motion and accept Olivia's statement as she read it, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, that takes us to item seven, notices and requests. I'd entertain a motion to authorize the auditor to post notice of hearing on March 26th, 2019, to consider carryover supplements from the 2018 budget to the 2019 budget.
That's my motion.
Second.
I noticed Kim Adamson is here, do you have any comments, Kim?
Good morning Commissioners, this is just part of our annual budget process where we propose carryover items from the 2018 budget to the 2019 budget. This is a request for your authorization to post the notice of a budget hearing which would be held in two weeks on Tuesday, March 26th.
All right, thank you. So we had a motion in a second, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Kim. Planning and zoning notices, and there are none. Takes us to item nine, petition for compromise of lien. We have three this morning. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning, Melinda Storley, Commission Assistant. Petition to compromise lien, DPNO 87862, in the amount of $1,356.86, was considered by the Board of Commissioners on February 26th, 2019, but was deferred for two weeks. Commissioner Benega requested more information regarding any possible workers' compensation the applicant may have received for injury prior to making his, the final decision on the compromise. I did speak with the petitioner who stated that the company told her that they would try to find her another position that might be better for her, but let her go when they were unable to. She mentioned that no one ever spoke with her about workers' compensation, she'd been with the company 14 years. She is requesting release of the lien in full with no payment. The lien represents poor relief for rental assistance for the petitioner in 2015. Payments toward this lien total $310. She is here today, if you'd like to ask any questions.
Okay, thank you. Understand the petitioner's here, if you'd like to stand up and say anything, you're welcome to, you don't have to identify yourself, you don't have to say anything if you don't want to. Okay. Are there any questions? Okay, not a, Commissioner Barth?
Comment, I think it's unfortunate that workers' comp was not presented by the company or the employee group. I believe there is a union at that location, and it's an example, though, where not having the language skills can be a problem.
Commissioner Benega?
First of all, I want to thank Melinda for going back and doing the research, and after getting the explanation and reading through that, I agree with Jeff, there's some issues that should have been resolved, and frankly, I would make a motion to settle us with no payment.
I'll second, I have a question for the Chair, though.
I have a comment.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, Commissioner Hiebarger?
Just, actually, I'm going to direct it towards Commissioner Karski since he knows insurance. Is there nothing you can do about, it's too late as far as workman's comp, it's way too far past, and they'll...
There are very specific reporting rules by the Department of Labor, but they're pretty much usually in favor of the injured employee receives full benefit of the help from the Department of Labor, so I would encourage, if this is a work-related injury, that, and she was maybe through, because of language barriers or other barriers, unable to or unknowing about how work comp works, did not submit a claim that she could contact the Department of Labor about going back and doing so for lost wages, medical bills, whatever the case may be.
Thank you, Commissioner Karski.
I forgot we had a insurance guy in the crowd, but working in employment law and stuff, I wondered if you had an opinion, Madam Chair. I think there are certain, like, dates, you have to report it within like four days or something like that at the same time, and not everybody is going to be remembered to do that. I used to report every ding I got, just because I didn't know if it was going to turn into, you know, something horrible, anyway.
Okay.
The reporting has to be done to the employer, not to any other government entity, so if she notified the employer of the injury, that would fulfill the reporting requirements. I'm not an attorney, but that's my understanding of how that works.
East River Legal can maybe help with something like this, right? What's the name of that group?
East River Legal Services is an opportunity for legal services, if you feel like you, if there's, if you feel like there's a claim that you want to pursue, I would encourage you to visit with someone over there, so...
Maybe Melinda could give her some of that information.
I do have the contact information available.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benega?
The other comment I'd like to make, besides the legal issues, is when you look at the description of the partial payments and the support that's been made since 2009, it's pretty impressive, so thank you for doing that. If we had that kind of response from everybody that owes us some support for liens, we would be financially a lot, we wouldn't have to worry about legal issues, so thank you for doing that.
Any other comments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiebarger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
So that takes us to our second item, Melinda.
This is petition to compromise lien, DPNO 23603, in the amount of $20,000, was considered by the Board of Commissioners on March 5th, 2019, but was deferred for one week with a counter offer from Commissioner Karski and Commissioner Barth encouraging the applicant to consider a payment of $5,000 towards the lien instead of the $2,200. I did speak with the petitioner, he is now requesting release of the lien in full upon payment of $5,000, or release the lien only insofar as the real property with no payment. Legal description, Lot 10, Block 5 of Lowell High Addition to Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota. In this case, the petitioner is trying to refinance his home for lower monthly payments, to reduce his monthly payments from $800 to $541 a month.
Any questions from Melinda? Commissioner Karski?
No questions from Melinda, I guess, comment, though, if I could.
Go ahead.
You look at this, assistance goes back over 30 years, and this person obviously had some growing up to do back when, from what I read, and I think they have. He could have left this go on forever, we don't force payment of these liens, we have a lien against them, but we don't force payment of them. And the fact that he came a few weeks ago and offered $2,000, and we said, well, I suggested $5,000, and he's able to come up with it, I guess it was a little scratching, but he was able to come up with it. I am supportive of compromising this lien for the $5,000. It's off our books, but, yeah, the likelihood that we'd see any money anytime soon if we didn't do this is pretty remote.
Any other comments? Commissioner Hiebarger?
Just reading his narrative and stuff, and I just commend him for all the work he did to put his life back together, and I think it's, I think it's great.
Anyone else?
I'll second Dean's motion, if that was one.
That would have been a motion, yes.
Motion in a second, any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiebarger?
Aye.
Karski?
Yes.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And your last one, thank you, Melinda.
This is, the Commission Office has received a petition to compromise lien, DPNO 39133, in the amount of $4,274.97. The lien fees were recorded from April 1998 through May 2010, and represent poor relief and court-appointed attorney fees for the lienee. The petitioner is requesting release of the lien with no payment, only insofar as it applies to the real property at 1513 North Conifer Place, number 39 in Sioux Falls. The petitioner is in the process of selling her home and will be closing on March 25th, 2019. She states that she was married to her ex-husband on October 13, 2007, and divorced on September 8, 2009. She commented that the lien fees are all his, and that she should not be responsible for them, because the fees were incurred before they were married, and, oh, pardon me, it says before they were married by the lienee and his former spouse, and after the divorce by the lienee. So there's a, there's a division in the, on the lien summary that shows up to a court-appointed attorney, where he had been previously married, and those three fees belonged to him and his previous spouse. And then he remarried, and then divorced, and then after the divorce, he incurred the following five lien fees. So she was not married to him during the period of any, that any of these liens were recorded.
Any questions from Melinda? Commissioner Hiebarger?
I just have a question about the proposed motion, and shouldn't it, wouldn't we want to include, maybe it's towards you, State's Attorney, to remove the, her name from the lien, also not just the real property, because if we just remove it from the property, if that's what we do, if we removed it from the property and not from her name, it would continue in her name, and so when, when we do get to that point of making a motion, we may want to add to the motion to remove her name also. Madam Chair?
So it appears to me that the real property is in her name, so you would be removing the lien from her name and leaving it in the name of the ex-spouse.
So the, the motion that was written in here would be sufficient?
I'm getting some information from Olivia that her name is not on the lien at this time, it's just the house that shows up on the lien.
Okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Thank you, Olivia. Any other comments or questions?
I, I guess I'll ask a question of the State's Attorney. So if I've been previously married and incur a debt, and then I get married to a second person, don't I carry those debts with me, and don't they all belong to the three of us now?
Well, sometimes there can be a lot of straws in the glass, so I, I think that what we would have to look at here is the facts before us, and the facts before us are that the asset was never an asset of the ex-spouse. And there's a statute that says that the separate property of a individual is not subject to the debts of a spouse, if it's separate. And so it appears to me, from the facts that we've been provided, that this asset was never an asset of the ex-spouse, and so by statute, this real property should not have the lien attached.
Thanks.
You bet.
Any other questions?
The petitioner is available, if you have any questions for her.
Okay. If the petitioner would like to say anything, you can stand up, you don't have to say your name.
Oh, no, my name's Angela Hardy, I am the petitioner, and really, the only thing I'd like to say is thank you to Melinda for helping me through this process, and as we close on 20 minutes, and I know that she was just so much help to me, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, we all know Melinda is wonderful, and we appreciate that you recognize that, so... Okay, I think I'm waiting for a motion.
To approve?
Second.
So there's a motion to approve removing the house from the lien, is that what the motion is?
Yes.
Okay, motion in a second, roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiebarger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth? Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to everyone, yeah, thank you. All right, that takes us to public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to speak about something that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing nobody rushing to the podium, that takes us to regular business. First item is a brief presentation from the Minnehaha County Coroner's Office. Dr. Snell, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, Dr. Snell, the coroner, apologize for my voice, it's the crud that everybody else seems to be dealing with. First off, we had a pretty good year last year. We were able to finally get the digital x-ray unit that we had been trying to get for several years, which completes out the mobile morgue that we have, allowing us, if we need to go somewhere, we can do those x-rays. The other benefit to that is it reduces the cost to the county on cases that we have to do x-rays on, because if we do x-rays, that cost goes directly to the county, part of our budget. That cost has been, for every three x-rays we would do, it was $200, now it's $78 per case. That $78 goes towards the maintenance agreements that we agreed as Sanford Hospital to have for that unit. That may have to go up a little bit, because in that agreement, there's not the use tax that the state would require, so if we end up having to pay that use tax to the state of South Dakota, that fee, I think, goes to $84, but still, that's 84 versus 200 for every, it was 200 for every three, so if I did six x-rays, that would have been 400, now it's just 78 or 84, so that is a big savings to us there. If we look at our cases in the two-year total, total number of cases reported, our office went down, a lot of that really was the number of consults went down, and consults when another physician calls and says, this, your case or our case? Another area that we saw that decreased, of course, was the number of deaths that we completed death certificates on, that went down a little bit. Our number of autopsies stayed the same, but the externals dropped a little bit, so overall exam dropped a little bit, seven cases, not a lot, but a little bit, so that was an improvement. In the county itself, accidents still predominate is our main thing, followed by naturals, and then suicides, good thing there, I'll talk about in a minute, is the drop in suicides that we saw in 2018. Homicides, seven versus eight, not that much of a difference, and the number of undetermines was kind of cut in half, and people ask all the time, how many cases do we actually have that are undetermined? We looked at our cases, and as a whole, all the cases that I do, we ran about 3% of our cases, 3% to 4% of our cases, which is great, because at the national level, they can be as high as 10%, and still be considered acceptable numbers, so that was a good improvement for us there. Wanted to, real quick, mention suicide, so I wanted to look at that right quick. We did see a drop in our suicides, down from 38 to 27, I mean, excuse me, 35 down to 27, so it's not a huge drop, but that was a good size of a drop for us, and I think we saw some improvements, hopefully from last year, the education stuff we did. We did not see any one month predominate in that, we had only one month where we had three in that month for 2017, and 2018, if we look at those deaths, the only time we had more than two would have been June and October, and actually, November was our worst month with, actually, we had five in November, but still, overall, we saw a drop there, which would, which would be real good. If we take a look at what I think's on everybody's minds, is the drug deaths, and we look at our overall trend, the big changes we saw in 2018 was the number of cases that were solely heroin dropped, but the number of cases that were solely fentanyl greatly increased, methamphetamine pretty much stayed the same. Our prescription opiates, including oxycodone, we saw a small bump there, but nowhere's near what other people are seeing. Overall, our total drug deaths in the county did go up from 21 to 23, so we did see a small increase there. I think what we're seeing mostly now, with a lot of these, is heroin mixed with fentanyl, and it's the designer fentanyl's that we're seeing, or we're seeing the designer fentanyl's with a little bit of something else mixed in with them. And the problem with the designer fentanyl's is it takes a lot less than it does with normal fentanyl. It doesn't take much of the normal, takes even less, and the problem, we have a lot of those, is you may not know that's in there when they get them. Usually, from what I hear from the drug agents, is, is that the words around town, there's a bad batch going around, so everybody have to be careful. So in a nutshell, that's kind of what we saw, it was kind of a little bit of ups and downs throughout, but overall, I think it was a better year than what we've had some years. One last note is that, those of you who may know, we're always tight on cooler space, our cooler only stores five, there are times when we run out of space, because that cooler is shared with the hospital, and so we are working with the hospital to try to improve that, there's a couple of different options that we're looking at. One of those options, which would be the better of the one, we would not potentially see a benefit of that till probably next spring, simply because of some changes that are going on in the hospital territory, right there where my morgue is. So if we get that option, which is better, it won't be a relief until probably the end of next spring, but still, again, that would double our space, which would really help us for years to come. There is a plan for a improved, better overall morgue, but again, that's one of those domino effects, waiting on this over here to change, if it changes, then we can go forward with that, so keep our fingers crossed, we may actually get something that's better for everybody all around, if we can do that, so. One other comment is, we did have our annual October forensic course this past year, and we actually had almost 180 people come to that one, we were fortunate to have several forensic pathologists from the territory around us come and speak, so we had a lot of people come to that one, so that was a really nice advantage with that. The only, last comment will be, is, is you may remember that we have been involved, the Coroner's Office has been involved in infant and child death for years. That program terminated due to some legal issues that was never quite resolved, and a directorship issue. Out of that, the Department of Health, South Dakota Department of Health, has created a solely infant review team, where all we do is review infant deaths. We have had two of those meetings now, so that, infant deaths will go back, we will continue to review those, that data goes into the national database. Hopefully, at some point, we can get expanded abilities and some additional funding to go back into child death review as well, but that is something up, and again, the State Health Department, which is where I felt it should be, is now in charge of that review process, and so we're going forward with that, so. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Snell?
Well, first, let me say, we don't have much space either at the county, but going into that fentanyl issue, is there, can, from the toxicology, can you tell if it was a prescribed dose, or if it was illegal, custom-made? And, and is there both, or is it mainly illegal?
Most of what, there is a way. Prescription-made fentanyl is very pure, the illicit-made is not, and there is a byproduct of that that we can see. The other thing is, a lot of times when we see the fentanyl, we'll see one of the analogs along with it, which tells us that it's an illicit-made fentanyl. The prescription fentanyl's is really from a patch, it's the only way it's sold to the general public, and so we either find the patch, or we find where they've taken the patch, cut it open, and pulled up the, the liquid with a syringe. Those kind of deaths are few and far between, we didn't even have a single patch-related death in 2018, so what we're seeing are all illicit, illicit ones that are coming in illicitly. Originally, we weren't adding the test for the designers, but once law enforcement and drug agents told us that there was a blend of the designer and the regular fentanyl with the heroin and stuff like that, we started adding that, and we have started picking up more of those designer ones now, so that gives us more confidence, more and more of the fentanyl we're seeing is illicit-made, not prescription stuff.
Any other questions? Commissioner Hiebarger?
Thank you again for coming and speaking to us today, and it was just about a week ago that he spoke to the joint group of the city councilors and the school districts and stuff, a kind of small group, but I think he talked for like 45 minutes, which was great, lots of information. I'll make a comment, and I don't know that you can comment back on this or not, I read an article just this weekend about another state, and I don't remember what state, they are looking at deaths of people who have recently been incarcerated, who were drug addicts, and they had linked that people who had been recently incarcerated, and then obviously, they were without drugs for a period of time, and then went out, and then overdosed almost in a very short period of time, because their bodies were no longer used to the level of drugs they were taking, and they'd studied that, and they were trying to figure out, they were looking at the connection between the two, and then trying to figure out how they could prepare people coming out of incarceration, because they come out and think they can go back to their original drug level. I don't know if we're seeing very many incarcerated people that are coming out and that are immediately overdosing or not, or if that's even anything that you know, that background information that that would be helpful to us, to say we need to be preparing, I don't know, people who are coming out of jail who are drug addicts and don't realize they may be overdosing, so...
Yeah, the, the, two things there, one is, when we say overdose, the question is, are they overdosing but getting revived in the ER settings? You know, I have nothing to do with those cases. I have tried to work with the Sheriff's Department, but being the only one that can do the project, it's very hard for me to work this project in with everything else I do, but I was trying to review all of the urine drug screens that were at Sanford... But I was trying to review all of the urine drug screens that were at Sanford Hospital. And if any of them were considered a drug overdose, relay that information to the sheriff's office, which could then put it in a national database. Um, the problem with that is, is there's usually between 20 and 40 of those every week, uh, drug tests that are positive. And that's just, and each one of those takes me about 20 minutes to review. So that's a lot of extra work on top of my normal caseload. So it's hard for me to keep that up, uh, to answer the question. Second is, like I said, what few I see, I would have that information on mine.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's not something I track. Um, I mean, I could easily pick up that kind of information off my cases if I chose to track that. It's just not something that, that I keep track of. It's one of those things, if I had a statistician, we could do a lot more, but not having one, it's, it's, it's a limitation to that. Uh, so it's the challenges. As you said, room is always a limit, you know, and, and money's always a limit as well. So, um, that's one of those things. We, we try to get help when we can. The problem with it is, is all of our databases inside Sanford Hospital. So that means they have to have Sanford permission to access the computers, which is, if you're not a full-time employee, they don't want to give that up. So it makes a little bit of a challenge.
Thank you. Any other questions? Once again, thanks for all that you do and thanks for being here this morning.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item 11 is consider a motion to issue the annual proclamation recognizing March 16th as St. Patrick's Day for Minnehaha County. Deb McGeisig, good morning. Thank you for coming.
Good morning. Um, a much lighter topic, thankfully. Um, this is my first year doing this, so forgive me if I don't do this correctly. Val gave me this piece of paper and said I needed to come to the commissioners and read it to you. Is that the process involved? Thank you. Okay. Uh, so same.
I'm sorry? Good luck.
Oh, thank you. I know. I know. There's a lot of Irish words in here with the last name of McGeisig.
Yeah, come, just as a second.
In the old days, uh, we would read a paragraph each and pass it around the room, so to speak.
I think you should do that.
I was gonna say, I'm happy with Deb doing it. So.
And, and I realize now I have made a fashion faux pas, wearing red instead of green. So my apologies to the commission. I didn't think this through this morning. Uh, St. Patrick's Day proclamation of the Minnehaha County, of oh, Minnehaha County. Whereas we, the Irish men and women of all this day, of national celebration at home and in Ireland and in the homelands throughout the world, and whereas the joyous unity of St. Patrick's Day reminds us all of our shared heritage and membership in a global family, and whereas today we honor the patron saint of Ireland of his great message of love and peace to one another, and whereas celebrations are in order for an expression of culture and heritage and music, dance, poetry, games, and just a wee bit of green beer raised in a toast, and whereas green silliness abounds as you shed your troubles by the road for a chance of good cheer and with a wearin' of the green, which I did not, um, then we, this proclaim, as leprechauns are a-dancin' in the joy that's everywhere, with luck as, as your companion, from the deep in our hearts, we treasure our strong community spirit and tradition of welcome and care for one another, and thank God for the Irish who give us St. Pat to bring us together a wearin' of the green hat, then shout and proclaim for the world is Irish on the 17th day of March. Woo.
Excellent. Good job. All right. Is there a motion? Prove.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll all, we'll all see you on Saturday, wearing green.
Well, let's hope Wednesday our, um, bagpipers get down here with the weather coming from Canada. So think happy thoughts.
Okay, thank you. All right, that takes us to item 12, and it's a brief presentation on the Information Technology Department. Monty Wannenbach, thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. I appreciate, uh, the invitation to have me come up and speak with you, uh, this morning. Uh, Monty Wannenbach, uh, with the IT department, and I'm just gonna go through a presentation. I encourage you to, um, stop me and ask questions as we go through this. So we'll go ahead and get started. Um, so want to start off just by talking about, uh, projects that we've completed here in the past year. So as you know, we've been working on a ERP, uh, solution here at the county. The first two phases are the Tyler Munus financial phase. Um, that went live in May of 2018, um, as well as the Tyler Incode property tax solution was, which also went live in, uh, May of 2018. So we've been on those a little while, and now we're, um, into the third phase, which we'll talk about coming up. Um, those two phases, you know, uh, went live, um, on schedule and on budget, so that's a good thing. Um, it's a big project, so of course it had its challenges with, which you were kind of in tune with. Another completed project was, uh, core network switch replacement. Um, so that, uh, replaced the, kind of the heart of our network where all the traffic comebacks, comes back to our server room um, and either goes to servers or the internet or what have you. Um, that project, uh, went well and, um, it's, it's good that we take those things for granted, that we have a reliable network that, uh, doesn't have, uh, very much downtime. Um, for the most part, this was just a scheduled replacement and went well. At the end of last year, we did a security camera refresh. Um, in that project, we refreshed, uh, the software and the server hardware that stores, uh, that video as well as, uh, a bunch of the cameras, uh, that were on first floor. Um, and we added some additional cameras. As you enter this building, you may notice both on the east and west entrances, there are cameras that, uh, oversee the parking lot. Um, this is an IP-based solution versus the previous analog solution. Um, and that gives us flexibility. So on this campus, we have fiber between all of our ba- buildings. If we want to add a camera here or there, um, we can do that and have it be all a part of one solution. Um, prior to this, we kind of had, you know, a solution in this building, another solution in that building. Um, this solution is scalable, and with the IP cameras, we can just put a camera here, there as we need to moving forward. We've gotten Craig from, uh, Courthouse Security, uh, set up, so he can kind of be the, the eyes, uh, of that system. And, you know, if we have an incident in this building or wherever we have cameras, um, he has the ability to go in and, and have, uh, a visual of, of what's going on. Um, current projects, so, uh, like I mentioned, we're, um, working on the, the third phase of that ERP solution, which is the HR payroll phase. Um, here at the county, we have a lot of departments with, um, you know, uh, lots of different, uh, pay codes. Uh, 24/7 departments like the sheriff's office and, and the jail and JDC. So our, our payroll is complicated with, which, with lots of different pay codes, but that, uh, project is going well. Um, I don't foresee any issues with the, um, go-live date of July, um, coming up here this year. Um, so, uh, project is going very well. Also doing, um, our yearly P- PC refresh. We replace about one-fifth of our desktop and laptop computers throughout the county every year. Um, so that is kind of budget-friendly, um, doing just, uh, a fraction of those every year. And also, um, works well for our, our staffing, so we can kind of, uh, spread that, that work out. Um, so, um, I did also mention that, uh, for the attorneys, uh, we're replacing, you know, um, their, typically they have desktops, replacing them with, with tablets. Um, the tablets that, that we're deploying to the attorneys allow them to go in the courtroom and with their new case management software, you know, they, they have access to all the case information, including scanned-in documents. Any documents that they have, um, scanned in and associated with a case, they could theoretically walk around the courtroom and access all that, uh, case information and including scanned documents, um, which beats going to court with, with boxes. Uh, but that's a transition, you know, the tools are in place. Um, you know, uh, so I think over time, we'll see them using the scanning more and more. Um, but it's, it's worked out very well for them. And then last item, uh, I have on the list here is, uh, a patrol mobile refresh. So as you know, um, our sheriff's office patrol cars have, uh, mobile computers in them. Um, those computers are, are five years old and in need of refresh. So we're doing some, uh, testing of some demo equipment, uh, currently with those and hope to, to get that project moving along here soon. Uh, the biggest, uh, improvement we've seen with the, all of the computer re- refreshes that we've, uh, been doing is we're, uh, using solid-state hard drives in those computers to help improve performance, and it's made a big difference. Uh, future opportunities, um, you know, we still have legacy applications out there. The lean application is, is one. Um, and we have others as well. Highway has some. And we have various different legacy applications that we'll still have to work to either, uh, develop new Windows applications or purchase an application. The lean one in particular is probably one that we'll have to develop, um, just because there's not very good solutions out in the market for that. Next item here, uh, upgrading, uh, Tyler Incode nine to 10. Um, you know, we're going through this big ERP project and you, you think that, uh, this is your destination. In IT, you're, you're never at that destination. There's always another upgrade or, or change coming down the road. We knew when we, uh, implemented Incode nine that, uh, we really wanted to get to, to this next version of Incode, um, Incode 10. It's a much more modern version of that solution. Um, they just didn't have it customized for the state of South Dakota. As you can imagine, property tax software is very, uh, customized for a state. And so when we went into this project, we, we knew that Incode 10 was, uh, developed and deployed in other states, but not ready for the state of South Dakota. Um, that, uh, upgrade from our in-house legacy system to Incode nine was, was very challenging. The data migration was, was challenging. Um, the upgrade from nine to 10 will be much easier because it will be really on that vendor. And they do upgrades of, of other customers, obviously from, um, their Incode nine version to 10. So, um, really, the, the hardest part of that project is done. Um, going from nine to 10 should be much easier. Patrol in-car video solution. So, um, as you know, the, the sheriff's office patrol vehicles have in-car video solutions to record, um, their, uh, traffic stops and whatnot. That solution is about eight years old. Um, and they're searching for grant funds to replace that solution, the cameras in the cars. Um, uh, and the equipment that goes along with that, the software that manages that video and whatnot. Um, we're also, uh, kind of in search for a new disaster recovery location. Um, right now, we use Fire Headquarters at 37th and Minnesota as kind of our off-site data, uh, replication and a little bit as a disaster recovery location. That's also where the backup 911 center is, so it makes, uh, a lot of sense in, in that aspect. Um, unfortunately, the fiber between here and there has really been problematic and it's been, um, a challenge to fit the amount of data that, that we have, uh, that we need to replicate to that site across the wireless network connection. Uh, so we're looking to move that. Um, one of the, the possible locations is the new museum archive facility. We don't need a lot of space. We just need a, a location that, um, uh, is owned by the county and that we have network connectivity to. Um, so I'll probably be coming back to you at some point in time to talk about, um, those options and, and costs that go along with it. Um, and then I'll, I'll touch on our long-range, long-range capital outlay, just to kind of give you an idea of, uh, what'll be coming up in the budget. Um, before I, before I jump to the, the capital outlay, I just wanted to show one slide of, um, our legacy applications being the, the green screen application at the top. So when I refer to legacy application, you know, the like, legacy applications that we have here are the, the typical green screen or AS400 applications, uh, that you see there in the top, uh, slide. Um, we, we get the, the mix of, of employees here at the county that, you know, if, if they've worked here for 10, 20-plus years, um, there, there are times where they really like those applications because they know how to navigate them very well. Maybe they're very strong keyboarders, so they can, um, function in and out of those screens very fast. And we'll get, uh, younger employees that will come to work here at the county, and they look at those applications and they, they don't even know what function keys are, and they, they struggle with them. They don't necessarily have the functionality and document, uh, imaging that our modern applications have. So, um, we kind of have our work cut out for us when we purchase or develop applications to meet those expectations. So oftentimes, we find ourselves trying to figure out how to make those strong keyboarders happy. So when we have a, a screen that requires a lot of data entry, how do we allow those strong keyboarders to still type-tab, type-tab and, and navigate quickly through those screens? Um, so anyways, um, it's been a transition. I, I like to refer to this as, uh, evolution versus an upgrade or a migration. You know, the county's been developing and, and working off of those legacy applications for decades. Um, so, um, I like to refer to it, like I said, as an evolution off of those applications. It's a really combination of purchasing and developing, um, new applications to migrate off that or to evolve off of that platform. Um, and then I have, uh, what I anticipate will be, um, some of our capital, uh, purchases, uh, for our, uh, 2020 budget. Um, so, uh, like I said earlier, we replace about one-fifth of our desktop PCs every year. Um, we're on a, our third year, we'll be on our third year of switch replacements throughout our campus, replacing switches that are approaching 10 years old. Um, we try to replace batteries in our UPS, um, every five years, again, so that they're reliable, so we don't have, uh, downtime in that regard. Um, SQL Server, uh, upgrades. We have typically two to three SQL servers in place at all times that have, um, dozen, dozens of databases on them. So we try to, um, have a couple of different versions of SQL and, and upgrade them over time. Um, network storage shelf, um, we have, give or take, uh, 60 terabytes worth of data that we have online, um, that store anything from, uh, videos from law enforcement to PDFs, uh, for financials or what have you. Um, so we have lots of data that, that, uh, we store here at the county and, and every, every often we, we budget to add additional storage capacity to that system. Um, and we're kind of approaching the end of life for, uh, Microsoft Office 2013 that we have here at the county. So we'll be, um, replacing that, uh, starting next year. Um, as far as, uh, staff, uh, requests and changes go, um, we are looking at, at potentially hiring a security administrator, uh, potentially in, uh, 2022. Um, I think we've done a, a great, uh, job in improving our security here at, at the county. Um, but at some point in the future, we, we just may need someone that has full-time eyes, um, looking at logs, making, uh, adjustments and modifications to, you know, stay, well, you know, a step ahead of the criminal activity that, that is out there and that we, that we see all the time. And here, next, we have just, uh, a quick, uh, little video that I'll play. This video is really just, uh, a couple of seconds worth of activity on our firewall that takes about, uh, 10 or 15 seconds or so to play. Uh, if I can get that to play.
If you can't, no one can.
Trash me. Oh. I don't know.
It's the first time I've ever heard you say that.
We're both running the mouse here, so I'll, I'll let her run. I think it's just minimized there, and then we need to go back to the right slide. There's supposed to be a play button on the, um, bottom of the slide. Anyway, what this will depict is really just playing back the logs, um, of about a couple of seconds period of time. And those logs in this visual representation, um, show, uh, malicious, uh, network traffic coming from foreign countries and, and sometimes even here in the United States. Um, for the most part, it's, it's, um, not an advanced threat or, or anything like that. It's just that, uh, when you have a device that's on the internet, there's constant scanning of, uh, devices connected to the internet where cyber criminals are looking for vulnerabilities, vulnerabilities that once they identify that vulnerability using the tools that, that they have, they'll then try to exploit, um, that vulnerability, gain access to a system and from there, you know, move parallel network to try to find something else that they can exploit. And so, so much for that video.
Monty.
Somebody hacked it.
I've seen in other cases where there's been an intrusion, uh, where the victim says it was a, a government entity that had done this. How can you tell if it's a government entity as opposed to some 18-year-old in his basement?
Well, um, so I don't know that that's something that I can tell, um, but nation-sponsored attacks are typically more, more advanced. Um, more advanced, more persistent. Um, and so I think that, uh, when you have, uh, someone come in, look at the logs and, and determine, you know, what that cyber criminal was doing, um, they can kind of make an educated guess if that's a nation-sponsored attack or not. Um, you know, you can look at the IP address that these attacks. You know, you can look at the IP address that these attacks come from, and that may give you some sort of clue. But oftentimes, those cyber criminals will try to cover their tracks, and, you know, a nation-sponsored attack from China may actually go through another country that they've compromised, or maybe they're using, you know, Amazon Web Services and a computer that they have purchased in the cloud to do attacks to your network. So it's not always necessarily clear. So there's supposed to be a play button at the bottom. Oh, now your projector's not working. I apologize for that, but that was really the end of my presentation, so any questions?
Questions for Monty? Well, it's an impressive list of things that you guys have accomplished. I mean, we're kind of aware of it, but when you see it all down and you know how much work went into particularly some of those Munis projects, we really appreciate everything that you and your staff do to kind of keep us moving forward.
Yeah, I can't take credit for all of that. There has been, I don't know how many man-hours from the county, the auditor's office, HR right now, the treasurer's office during that phase, a lot of man-hours went into those projects. So it's really been a great team effort, and we couldn't do without those teams of folks dedicating time to it. Kim's not here anymore. I think she's actually down in my office. We're doing a budget training session this week for the financials. We didn't do it before we went live with the financials, knowing that we really wouldn't be doing our next budget for 2020 till the next couple of months here. So that's what we're doing this week.
Well, we really appreciate it, you know, and I knew that Trish could get this to work, so.
So there's the little, it looks like bullets or lasers coming from other countries. This depiction is actually our firewall logs that it's putting in a visual representation. So it's actual snapshot from a few months back of malicious traffic coming into our firewall and our firewall blocking that traffic.
It's a good visual. It makes us realize what all of us and all of our governmental entities and all of our businesses are subject to every day. We'd like to, I'd like to just ignore that and not know about that. So it's really important that we have people that are being vigilant to defend against those attacks.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 13, and we consider bid results and award recommendation for the sale of GPS survey equipment and authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with 605 Companies, Inc., Dirt Works. DJ, I saw DJ.
Hello.
Oh, there you are. I'm sorry.
Morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, Highway Superintendent. On March 6, we received two bids for the purchase of some surplus GPS equipment. We did put an estimate to how much we thought we might receive for bids, but I can tell you that we're pretty good at estimating construction costs, but the estimating of GPS equipment isn't necessarily our forte. We contacted some local companies that use GPS, and we also looked around online at some online auctions, and we came up with an estimate of anywhere really from 10 to 15 to $20,000, $21,000, I think, is what we had in the memo when we made the declaration of surplus. Our high bid was $13,500, and we have spoken with a couple of our engineering consultant friends that we do business with here in Sioux Falls. And we do think that this is a fair number, so we are requesting your award of this bid and enter into contract with 605 Companies, also doing business as Dirt Works. So if you have any questions, I'll stand by.
Any questions for DJ? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, roll call vote.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to item 14, Consider Bid Results and Award Recommendations for Construction of Parking Lot J and Authorize the Chairperson to Sign an Agreement with Blacktop Paving. Mark Krins, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Mark Krins, Director of Facilities. On February 27, bids were open for the construction of Parking Lot J. Blacktop Paving came in with a low bid at $199,895, followed by them was Suit Cup Construction at $206,206. And the last one was Asphalt Surfacing Company at $222,660.15. We reviewed the bids, and I'm requesting commission consideration of the bid award for Parking Lot J to Blacktop Paving. Are there any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a question.
Motion in a second, and Commissioner Barth.
Could we get by without paving it?
We could, but it's a lot of maintenance for just leaving it gravel.
Couple hundred grand, that's my only thought. But so when they do pave it, they'll be putting in a base and all that kind of stuff?
Correct. We had, just over $190,000 was left in the building fund last year, so those funds will cover the majority of the cost for the parking lot.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So that takes us to item 15, Consider a Resolution Authorizing a Retainer Agreement with Perkins Coie LLP to Serve as the County's Bond Counsel. Good morning, Donna.
Good morning, Sheriff. For your consideration today, we have a proposed resolution to authorize the chair to execute a retainer agreement with Perkins Coie Law Firm to serve as your bond counsel. As you know, last year, your current bond counsel indicated that she is retiring. As a result of that, the auditor prepared an RFP. The RFP was issued in October of 2018. There were seven firms that did submit proposals of those seven firms. We have determined that the most highly qualified responsive firm is Perkins Coie. It is our recommendation that you select Perkins Coie as your bond counsel. Included in the retainer agreement is a disclosure by Perkins Coie that it currently serves as legal counsel to US Bank with regard to unrelated lending matters. If the board authorizes the chair to execute the retainer agreement, the retainer agreement does confirm that this board is consenting on an informed basis after full disclosure of the conflict of interest to Perkins Coie's representation simultaneously of Minnehaha County and US Bank. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Donna?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to item 16, To Authorize the Chairman to Sign the 2019 Agreement Between Minnehaha County and the City of Sioux Falls for Detoxification Services. Craig Dewey.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. This is an annual contract renewal with the city of Sioux Falls. The city of Sioux Falls has worked with Minnehaha County to provide detox services, and the fiscal amount for the 2019 contract remains the same as 2018 in the amount of $157,500. I would stand by for any questions.
Any questions for Craig?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And Craig, you get to stay up, but give us a legislative update as we come to the end of the legislative session.
Tomorrow is day 39 of the legislative session, which means there is one day left reserved after that for veto day. So the number of bills that are still awaiting final action by the governor to sign or by the legislature has been getting smaller as the weeks go by. I will highlight a few bills, and after that, then Matt Thule from Metro Communications will provide an update specifically on state appropriations regarding emergency radio funding. The few bills that I would like to highlight from the session that are still hanging out there include Senate Bill 8, which would provide for statewide 2-on-1. As we get to the final day today and tomorrow, where the budget is being determined, this funding will be likely included in the budget. It's received a very positive response from the legislature so far, which is a very positive thing as far as connecting people with services throughout the local community here, and that's an opportunity to have those provided on a statewide basis. The next bill that I'd like to give you an update on is House Bill 1132. That bill has been discussed in the past weeks. If it would have been passed, it would have combined chemical dependency and alcohol-related involuntary commitments in with the county boards of mental illness across the state. After further conversation with Speaker Howgard, we have decided that law enforcement in partnership can help provide a more immediate response as far as getting the public educated, as far as what they can do if they have a loved one who is experiencing addiction-related issues. We will be looking at studying this issue further over the summer here in 2019 and bring forward legislation. Ultimately, Representative Howgard will bring forward legislation next year in 2020 regarding this process to see if there are ways that the timelines can be sped up regarding getting people processed with those drug and alcohol-related IVCs. Another bill that, the last one that I'd really like to highlight here is House Bill 1186, and that would have, if it would have passed in its original form, covered costs for defense of inmates who have committed crimes at different state facilities. As we have the state penitentiary here in Sioux Falls, that certainly results in a number of expenses for Sioux Falls or rather Minnehaha County each year. That language ended up getting hog-housed by the legislature, and so I think the legislature would really like a little more predictability as far as measuring the costs that would come from each county that has a state facility.
So would we.
Each year. And so in light of that, if there are any efforts that we can make as a county, and we'll be looking at this year, this year, to try and track those costs, I think it would provide legislators with a little more predictability and feeling comfortable with moving forward with legislation of that sort. Certainly want to commend Representative Caleb Fink for bringing that bill forward. He did a great job articulating the challenges that the five different counties that have state facilities incur through processes that the counties don't have input in. They don't operate state facilities, they don't control procedures. As counties, we get the bills. So again, Representative Fink should be commended for bringing that forward to try and bring some relief in that aspect. There were two bills that also passed regarding a pipeline response in terms of emergency response. I have been monitoring those bills, as you're aware. Those bills were brought forward at the very end of the session here, so they've really only been in the public for a little less than two weeks. They have been passed by the legislature, and I believe also signed by the governor. At this point, I will be doing a further presentation on those two bills and the impact that it would have to Minnehaha County and other counties across the state here at the commission meeting next week. The last bill that I want to touch on really involves someone else providing an update. Matt Thule has been gracious enough to come here from Metro Communications. As you're aware, there are emergency radio upgrades that need to take place in the future, and those have been monitored since last year. Matt has been diligently watching the process. So Matt, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and highlighting some of the great work that you've been doing, we appreciate it.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Matt Thule, the Technology Coordinator with Metro Communications. I also serve as the Chairman for the South Dakota Public Safety Communications Council. We're an oversight committee formed by executive action, oversee the operation of the state radio system. What I'd like to do this morning is to give you a little brief history of what the state radio system is, what it is, why it came into existence, and what we need to do to keep the lights on and keep it operational for years to come. Prior to 2003, all public safety entities in the state maintained their own state, or their own separate radio systems, including Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. We had, prior to the state radio system, we probably had well over a dozen different radio frequencies that we were using for communicating with our ambulance, fire, and law enforcement responders. In May of 1998, the F4 tornado destroyed the town of Spencer, South Dakota, and as would be expected in South Dakota, this prompted many outside agencies to respond to Spencer to provide mutual aid. These agencies included law enforcement, fire, and emergency management. All of the entities responding had their own radios with them, and none of them were able to communicate because they all had their own frequencies, they were their own systems. To get past these issues with communications, Governor Jankel had ordered a deployable radio system and handed out radios so everybody had a like system to talk on. 1999, House Bill 1292 was passed, which directed the eight state radio agencies using radio communications to integrate into a common system. Governor Jankel expanded the scope of this project to include all local agencies, and between 2000 and 2002, the master site was built in Pierre. The first of, the first five sites around the state were up for testing, and by the end of 2003, we had 35 radio sites, radio tower sites built within the state. These sites covered approximately 85% coverage, provided 85% coverage using mobile radios in the state. Since then, we've added an additional 23 sites statewide, providing approximately 98% coverage within the state. Many of these sites were installed with hefty investments from local responders, including Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls. Pennington County as well, we've installed what's called a simulcast radio system to improve communications. What that simulcast is, we've got, in Sioux Falls, we've got three tower sites around town that work together at the same time to improve coverage, make sure that we have the best coverage possible. We've got a, we've got a lot of challenges in Sioux Falls that other places don't have with our buildings and the dense population and such. The simulcast system assists with this. The South Dakota Public Safety Communications Council has a list of 12 areas that are in need of tower coverage. Three of these locations are critical as communications in these areas are very limited or do not exist. We do have one of these that was just funded in fiscal year 2018 through appropriations down in Union County. Port adventure, we've got a tower site up and operational down there to kind of fill in a hole down there. In 2012, the state, the system, the core system itself in Pierre was upgraded to be P25 compliant, which turns it from a radio system into more of an IP-based system. Basically, the radios that were used in our early radios are a computer. Looks like a radio, but all the operations are computer, it's all IP-based. So Project P25 or P25 was developed in 1989 by a coordinated effort of six national communication associations and federal agencies to address the lack of system interoperability between vendors, the interoperability that hit us in Spencer. The P25 standard is constantly under review, and it will be, continue to be the national standard for public safety communications for years to come. The upgrade performed in 2012 upgraded the core switches and the computers located in Pierre. To complete this upgrade, we need to also upgrade all the existing tower sites to be P25 compliant. Currently, we've got equipment in the tower sites to take the current radios that are not P25. It converts the radio traffic to a P25 standard and sends it to the core in Pierre. So we need to replace the tower site equipment. It's kind of a Band-Aid fix to patch the two systems together. We currently have 59 sites consisting of 62 towers. Currently, like I said, we're using the adapters to convert the radio traffic to the P25 standard. These upgrades need to be completed by 2023, '24, as this is the last year that the vendor will provide maintenance for the equipment we are currently using at the tower sites. 2016, the Public Safety Communications Council was asked to do a summer study for the operations and audit committee, which we did, and we moved forward with a budget request in 2017 of $21.6 million to upgrade the system. As you can imagine, that didn't go over good. So we were advised to come back with some other funding options. So this year, we presented an option, and we had legislation put together that would have requested a surcharge for all phones in the state of 42 cents. This 42 cents would have given us money to finish out the upgrade and also provide sustainable, sustainability funding for down the road. We need the sustainability funding, we need to add on additional tower sites. Some of the towers we are using are old, and they need to be replaced, that all comes at a cost. Towers are tricky, we can't just go in and ask for $250,000 a year because a tower, depending on what all needs to be. on what all needs to be done, you know, we've got all kinds of permits, federal permits, wildlife permits, that can take years. We had a site out in the hills, it took us five years just to get through all the paperwork. So, it's kind of hard to go through an annual budget and say, hey, we need this money, and then we're not going to spend it for another four or five years. So, the governor requested we don't go through with this legislation based on her three pillars, and she did request a budget modification for the 2019 budget and asked to put in roughly $4.5 million into the budget for BIT to sit there until 2023, to be the 24 budget for the state to help fund this upgrade. That $4.5 million is about half of the cost on a 2016 quote for finishing out the upgrade. That's Senate Bill 180. That is supposed to be being discussed today in the Joint Appropriations. It was supposed to have been yesterday, but it got pushed off. Hopefully, that bill passes to get that $4.5 million in there. We do still have, have to come up with the rest of the funding and hope for the upgrade as well as the sustainability. So, what does this mean for you? All agencies in the state, on the state radio system, need to have radios that are P-25 compliant when we do the switch over. Currently, the majority of the radios are not P-25 compliant, and they cannot be made P-25 compliant because they're too old. I know that the sheriff's office is already in the process of replacing their radios to the P-25 standards. The county fire and ambulance services are all aware of the need that it needs to be done before 2023, '24. County Highway uses their system, I believe, so they would have to have their radios upgraded as well. Your continued support is great. I know that you guys did put a letter of support in for our legislation that we were hoping to get started. One thing the commission, our council's looking at, we meet again next week, we're probably going to try to push through the same type of legislation for next year to finish out that upgrade funding. We've got to get the rest of the, roughly 10 million for the upgrade and hopefully some sustainability. So, what I'm suspecting is going to happen is we're going to, you know, suggest one price up to the upgrade, roughly 21 cents per phone line. Then after we get the upgrade done, get that funded, that'll be able to drop down to, you know, maybe 14, 15 cents per phone line for the sustainability, to keep the lights on the system and expand it and make it the best that we can. Lot of information, I know. Any questions for me?
Commissioner Heiburger.
Thanks, Matt, for coming. Actually, I requested Matt to come. The SDACC convention for this week was canceled. This is one of the things we would have talked about at the Board of Directors, and I thought since we're fortunate to have Matt here in Sioux Falls, and he could give us the latest and the greatest on what was going on with 911, I asked through Craig if he could contact, well, we kind of messaged back and forth quite a bit last night, just trying to see if Matt could come this morning and kind of tell us what was going on, since it is an important issue to Minnehaw County, and thought it was the best way to really get the new news that was out. So, thanks, Matt, so much for making time and bringing your youngest with you. I assume your youngest, maybe I'm wrong, but thanks for coming and sitting with us this morning.
Other questions for Matt? Matt, I'm curious if, you know, you spend, if you get all, if you get your financing, you get the towers and the things upgraded, and if the, if you anticipate any trouble getting the counties, the providers, to get their equipment upgraded? Because I'm guessing that the system doesn't work unless everybody does their part.
So, yeah. We had the same issue several years ago when the FCC mandated narrowbanding. You know, we were putting out constantly, you need to have your systems narrowbanded, you need to have this done, or it's not going to work, the FCC is going to fine you. You'd think an FCC fine would scare most people, but a lot of places, they were right down to the wire to get the narrowbanding done, and, you know, it wasn't really a big deal to do it, it just had to be done. So, yeah, we probably will. Unfortunately, there are some entities out there that still maintain their own systems as well. Everybody in the state has access to the system, they've all got radios, so if, you know, the big event happens in their area, hopefully they're, they might not know how to use their radios, but we'll be able to get them at least on the same system. But, long story short, I'm sure there will be entities that are dragging their feet, and it's going to be an expensive drag too, because the radios are not cheap.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate all the work you put into this to keep all the citizens of South Dakota safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item 18, Liaison Reports. Any Liaison Reports, Commissioner Heiburger?
I'll give kind of a short one. This last week, I was at NACO in Washington DC, National Association of County Organizations. I first attended the legislative part of it, sat on the National Justice and Safety Committee, and worked on some different legislation that will be brought to our next meeting, which is in, there are resolutions that were brought, that will be brought in July, and we'll discuss them again and then vote on them as a committee. And the rest of, and then the convention started on Monday, and I intend to give a report next week on some of the breakout sessions and things that I went to. I'm just going to talk about one of them today, which was one of the sessions I went to, which is RAC. They were talking about the census, which is going to be done, and the hope by the census is that they will do 55% of it through your computer or your cellphone, and so that they're hoping to gain a lot of their census that way. And census is important because that's how they push down the funding to different states. There was one particular state that's quite concerned that they won't get the same amount of funding or representation in Washington DC because of the loss of citizens in their county. I'm going to pass out to you, and I can give it to you after this meeting, it's called Mobile App Launch, it's called Test It, you can kind of see it, that you would put on your cellphone, and this is put out by NACO, because the companies that own cellphones, like your Verizon, your Sprint, or the different ones, when they report to the FCC how many, how active their service is in an area, they're only required to have one person. So, you say, Minnehaw County only has one person who has good cellphone service, that automatically means all of Minnehaw County has good cell service. So, they don't actually have a good record of where there is good service and where there is bad service. And so, NACO has come out with this app called Test It, that you put it on your phone, and I've done it now, and it will tell you how fast the broadband is in your area. So, I tested it yesterday at my house, and I don't live in Sioux Falls, I live outside of Sioux Falls, and then I tested it again this morning to see if it was really true. And my phone says that where I live, I have below the national average, and I have below the FCC minimums for broadband service, which I was shocked, because I thought, in Minnehaw County, we've got amazing service on our cellphones. Anyway, I would encourage you to each load this, because this is connected with NACO, and it's going to help them pinpoint where there is good service and where there isn't, so that they can go back and report this to the FCC, because right now, there's a misrepresentation as to what the service is out there. Next week, I hope to come back with you with a little bit more thorough report of some of the stuff that I worked on while I was in DC, so I'll make sure you each get a copy of this paper.
Okay, thank you. Any other Liaison Reports this morning? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, I see Scott Anderson is here. Scott, were you going to report on your meeting last week?
Oh, I can't.
He went out and above and beyond and went to the Hartford City Council meeting last week.
Well, Jeff, you're stealing my thunder now. I went to, Scott Anderson Planning Director, and I did go to the Hartford City Council meeting, and the discussion on joint zoning lasted about as long as Jeff's presentation. There was none. They said they were going to talk about it for 10 minutes, they opened the floor, made a motion, seconded and approved it, and it was done. Then, that was it. So, I don't know what that means, other than they're moving ahead, but we will be working with them. I've reached out to Teresa Seidel, the city manager, and they know that there's a very specific legal process we're going to have to go through, and furthermore, it is certainly my intent that either we will do it ourselves here at the county, or I will work jointly with the city, but every single person that is going to be in that joint jurisdiction is going to be notified by us or them, either through a postcard, we're going to have some hearings, neighborhood meetings, I won't call them hearings, but we're going to have some discussions about the zoning ordinance, because I think it's important to have people know that the zoning control of their property is going to change, because I don't want someone that is going to be coming in here at some date saying, well, I never knew, or I didn't have a chance, or whatever. So, we're going to have some public visioning sessions, whatever we want to call those neighborhood meetings on that process, and we'll probably have them at the West Central Schools. They've allowed us to use their gymnasium before for public meetings like this, but we'll start working on that, but that was, that was last Tuesday.
I would just follow on and say that this process is, in a sense, a can of worms, because, you know, should there be a decision made that's appealed within that area, the city council would have to attend our meetings here at nine in the morning in Sioux Falls to listen to the appeal, in the same way that we meet with the city of Sioux Falls on appeals there. And we've had issues with a quorum with other communities in the county where we're sitting around waiting with a room full of 70 people, and there's not a quorum from that other community, and, you know, just as we're about to pull the plug, you see somebody coming down the hall, and, anyway, and also legal representation, our several deputies have suggested that, why is it their job to, say, consult with the Hartford people about what's in their legal best interest? It's not, and, you know, to ensure that they are represented, even at our city council meetings with Sioux Falls, I don't see city attorneys there. So, then it becomes a question that goes to our representative. Anyway, that's complicated. Thank you, Scott. I do have another one.
Go ahead, Commissioner Barth.
Speaking of legal, I'm expecting to try to bring forward a change to our ambulance ordinance. It's been pointed out to me that the state requirements have changed from requiring two EMTs on an ambulance to requiring one EMT and a driver, and whereas our ordinance still requires two EMTs, which was how the state requirement, what it used to be, it was changed administratively, and at least for one ambulance service that helps us in Minnehaw County, that has been a bit of a burden, because they operate in four different counties. I'm referring to Jasper, where they do Moody County, Minnehaw County, Rock County, Pipestone County, and trying to juggle all the requirements is a burden. So, I think going to the least burdensome regulation could be the best, and I guess, Maggie and I have talked about this, do you have a comment?
Go ahead. Well, I think Commissioner Barth has given a good overview, and I guess it appears to me that the amendment came to administrative rule was in July of '16, which was about the same time as you amended the ambulance ordinance the last time, because of course you amended it last year. And so, I suspect, even though it predates me, I suspect that perhaps either there was a conversation of keeping the two EMT even though it had been repealed statewide, or perhaps there was a lack of knowledge about that. I don't know, but I know that we had those discussions this last time, and the, at least the conversation, I think, was that there was a desire to keep the two EMT standards, but perhaps the discussions weren't brought forward from the representatives of the Jasper ambulance at that time. So, but that's kind of the history, is it was required and repealed at about the same time that you changed the ordinance back in '16, and so now, in fact, there is no two-person EMT requirement in administrative rules, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other Liaison Reports? Commissioner Bennega.
Last week, Jeff and I attended the Metro Communications conversation about the review of the business structure, and we did give you a handout, I believe, and basically, the overview of that is that the current system does work the way it was planned a few years ago. It's going to continue as a MOU between the county and the city. There's no major cost savings to change that. The governance as it is operating currently has worked. We are continuing to look if there's interest for partners from another county to collaborate with that group. There's two issues currently. One is obviously personnel with hiring a new director, and myself, Mayor Tanakin and Commissioner, or Councilman Kylie are going to do the reviews of the applications for that director's position. I believe they've narrowed that down to seven qualified people, so that will happen over the next few weeks. And then the other issue is the backup system for what's going to happen with Metro Communications in the future. So, those are items that Jeff and I will be involved with in the future of that, but for all practical purposes, everything will stay the same after going through all that process to decide if there was a benefit to separate it and move one piece of it to the county or to the city or whatever, but what we've done in the past has worked, and we do appreciate the people who gave us extra time about questions we all had about legal accounting, HR, all those kinds of things, and the good news is, what we're doing works.
That is good news, and we appreciate everybody spending the time. It's always good to take a step back and reevaluate and make sure that we're on the right track, so I appreciate that. Any other Liaison Reports? If not, any new business? Any old business?
Just a comment on the 211, has, they said it's gone to the governor's desk, and I just wondering what the commission would think about sending a letter to the governor supporting 211, and maybe you don't want to go that way, but just as 911 is important for all citizens, 211 has nationally been trying to be pushed out to all different count, all different states to get statewide 211, because if there was a national disaster, you cannot, or some type of a disaster, you can't have all your public calling 911 for help, and 211 can be that next level down. So, it actually, for us, is a benefit too. It does, California, I think I brought this up a few weeks ago, California went statewide 211 after some of the disasters they've had, and they said it took so much stress off of their 911 service, because the citizens had another place to call if they had non-emergency phone calls and they just needed assistance, and so, just a thought, I don't know what anybody else's thoughts would be on that.
Madam Chair, I think that's a fine idea. That said, we already have the benefit in Minnehaw County of 211 service, and so I think it would benefit the whole state if they had it.
Anyone else? And we can work with staff and try to put a letter together, so. Okay, I entertain a motion to recess.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll recess for about 10 minutes, and then we'll go back to the executive session.